I now call order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, six thirty. Roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terrapanning.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
And Commissioner Seaver.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Bob Russell, a family of faith church. Please stand. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Let us pray. God our Father, as we gather for this meeting, may we be guided by your wisdom, your love, and your abiding presence. We pray your wisdom teaches us what is truly important, and that you give us courage to do the right thing. We ask that you empower us to build a strong community for growth, and especially unity among our leaders. We acknowledge that we are dependent on you and are trust in you completely. Watch over each and every one in our city as we engage in keeping it and our citizens safe. Bless our first responders, our police officers, our firefighters, paramedics, and from him and through him all things both now and forever. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we'll go to a special presentation. It's indeed a pleasure to award our mayors of Enterprise Village and our four point O students. If colleagues would see on the stage, we'll turn it over to Ms. Menusus.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. While the mayor commissioners are making their way to the stage, we'd like to recognize the principals that are with us tonight, from Sunset Hills, Principal Mile, from Tarpon Springs Middle School, Principal Giles, from Tarpon Springs High School, Principal Joyner, and also from Tarpon Springs High School, Assistant Principal Fadalitis. Thank you. Just to let you know, just a couple of announcements. Tonight's presentation can be viewed on your Government Acts channel. If you visit our website, you can find the listing of days and times for the replay. And we will, if we could ask you to hold your applause so the students can hear their names as they're coming forward, please, thank you, and we'll get started. Tonight, we honor the following students who represented the City of Tarpon Springs as Mayor of Enterprise Village during the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year. From Tarpon Springs Fundamental, Daniel Toffick. From Tarpon Springs Elementary School, Haley Dermadog. And from Sunset Hills Elementary School, Reynard Firstenberg. And I'm sure they did an excellent job representing our mayor at the City of Tarpon Springs. Congratulations. Okay, our next item, we are recognizing the students, the fifth grade students that maintained a four point O grade point average. From fifth grade, we will recognize students from Tarpon Springs Fundamental, Tarpon Springs Elementary School, and Sunset Hills Elementary School. From Tarpon Springs Fundamental, Mitchell Allred. Myra Hannah. Benjamin Johnson. Joseph Ramirez. Kaitlyn Rossi. Okay, Riley Sullivan. And Andrew Theophilopoulos. From Tarpon Springs Elementary School, Angie Bardalis. Haley Demmerdog. Richard Gibaldi. And if I mispronounce these names, please forgive me. Nicole Isaac. Kaitlyn Lacastro. Alexander Rivera Zerate. And Devon Zadeh. From Sunset Hills Elementary School, Sarah Beck. Summer Major. Spiros Mazarakas. Elizabeth McQuerry. Lauren Mueller. Colton Sakadellas. And Ephemia Trechilis. Now, we recognize the eighth grade students from Tarpon Middle School. The eighth grade students from Tarpon Springs Middle School, Vanessa Agoras. Tia Badal. Maria Chigares. Kira Clark. Megan Cox. Okay. Ellie Collins. Kayden Culver. Erica Davis. Justin Ditmar. Mackenzie DeFresney. Shania Ezer. Amanda Foreman. Christiana Jones. Molly O'Neil. Carlin Reinhardt. Peter Sackloridis. Kennedy Schartz. And Stephen Wadsworth. Those are your eighth grade four point O students. And now, we recognize the following seniors from Tarpon Springs High School. Megan Carrington. Ruth Chavez. Michael Decoder. Claudia Dilbeck. Megan Dillard. Madison Flick. Jessica Johnson. Daniel Jerkic, Jersek. Kelsey Lynn. Jeanette Mazarakas. Kelly O'Neil. Sophia Pulis. Julia Sidoyan. Cameron Shapiro. Marissa Soriano. Georgina Zooks. And Joanna Theophilopoulos. That conclude, those are our four point O seniors from Tarpon Springs High School.
No, we'd just like to applaud all the hard work of all of our students this evening that was awarded, and especially thank all of the parents, guardians, teachers, principals, everybody that helped these young people to be successful here tonight. We just want to congratulate all of you. I know you feel especially proud of the one that you came here to recognize. I don't think all of y'all came here just because we had a commission meeting tonight. But I don't know if any commissioner have any comments? If not, then we'll allow you to leave. We'll recess for a while, just in case you might want to leave before we start.
Why?
Well, I mean, they were private schools. They were rigorous. It wasn't, you know, and I chose purposely because like, college, I could have gotten like an easy GPA, but college was something hard, math, so I did economics major, which I knew I could pass. Then I did math challenges.
High school's like too easy, and so I like didn't care.
I thought it was tough.
But I did, I could have done better. I think I got three point one, yeah, two point eight undergrad, three point one.
And my brother. Like, I got a four point O, and John, you don't have a class, you know, you can just do music.
Well, there's certain.
Well, yeah, but back then even, they didn't like it. It's different. Yeah, I always had to earn my grades.
Yeah, I responded. Um, I'm working, you know, I'm gonna leave, yeah, I'm gonna leave front work. I'll be lucky to get that one done. If you want, I could like pick you up on the way as I'm flying down. I'm going for, it's a tough time here. My school's short on subs every day, so I'm gonna work for periods one to three, and then leave midway through my fourth period, zip on them, so.
Do you need to get my response?
No, I appreciate it. Yeah. Yeah, if I'm not there on time, I'll be just a little late. I'll be close. That'd be good, thank you.
Have fun with that. There's nothing you don't know. It's just, it's just like in all their glory.
You done?
Yeah, Townsend, me, Townsend, and the mayor did it larger. We were done early, but we had to physically stay in the room for four hours.
Oh, for real?
Yeah, we're done thirty minutes. I tried to walk out. They were like, if you want your certificate, you have to stay in the room. I'm like, we're done. It said state statutes, four hours.
Well, I'm kidding.
Like, no, we're not.
And you will have people pass. You'll sit there.
Yeah, a few, people like Mark and Eileen.
You'll ask questions, and you'll sit there and think your seat. All around. People ask questions. You're like, did you do what you're proposing for ethics training? I learned one new thing. You can come to Skype via meeting.
Like, uh... Start the meetings back again, and we'll go to public comments. Any item that's not on the agenda, come forward, state your name, address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Peter Delakis, five one four Ashland Avenue. I come before you to say, God rest your soul, John Hubbard. God rest your soul. I knew John only from the time I came on the board, but since that time, and, you know, it's been about eleven years, I've gained to appreciate more and more the value that Mr. Hubbard brought, not only to Tarpon, to Dunedin, and to some other cities, Pinellas County, but also to the state of Florida. He was one that truly took on the task of helping cities to progress and move forward, to help their citizens protect their home rights and their values, and he did it in a fair and honest way. I can honestly say I learned a lot from him. I know we had our sometimes disagreements on points, but I always respected his opinion, and even if I disagreed with him, he respected mine. I love you, John, and we're going to miss you terribly, and thank you for all you've ever done for us here. Amen.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll go to proclamations. We have National Public Works Week. This proclamation reads, "Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, whereas the support of and understanding informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their plan and design and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes the contribution which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, whereas the year two thousand and fifteen marks the fifty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association. Now therefore I, David O'Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing March seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, as National Public Service Week."
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Tom Funch, Public Works Director. Public Work employees happily accept this proclamation and the recognition that goes along with it. Many times, they go unnoticed unless, of course, there's a pothole, tree down the road, some type of flooding of some sort, but every day, these people go out, they work extremely hard, and a lot of times, they go unnoticed, like I said, men and women work very hard. So if you're out there and you see them working, sweating away, stop, wave, say hello, and you can say to your friends and all, those people are employees of Tarpon Springs, they're hard workers. But for those of you riding around, happen to see somebody leaning on a shovel, maybe daydreaming someplace, just remember, they're probably county employees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any public comments on this item? Hearing none, we'll go to our presentation, item number two. Probably a lot of people have been waiting for City Manager and Police Chief grant opportunity.
Yeah, and all your waiting, you'll have to wait a little longer because this item is to grant the opportunity to Mr. Joyer, the principal of the high school, to make a special announcement to us.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Chief, James Joyer, Principal Tarpon Springs High School, along with me, Lisa Fadalitis, Assistant Principal, and Chris Tuscany, Assistant Principal. We'd like to go ahead and call up Toreen, Corporal Toreen Mathis, please. Toreen does not know, we've kept this a secret for a long time. Stand there for just a moment. Okay. This letter was dated April seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, and it states, "To the Pinellas County School Board and Tarpon Springs City Council members, it is my privilege and honor to nominate Corporal Toreen Mathis as the two thousand and fifteen Outstanding School Resource Officer of the Year for Pinellas County. If I could use one phrase to describe Corporal Mathis, it would be dedicated to the students, staff, and community of Tarpon Springs. Toreen has Tarpon maroon running through his veins. As a lifelong resident of Tarpon Springs, Toreen attended and graduated from Tarpon Springs High School in two thousand and two. Upon his graduation from high school, he joined the United States Army and honorably served our country in Afghanistan as a military police officer. During his tour of duty, he was awarded the Combat Action Badge. He was honorably discharged from active duty in two thousand and seven. After completing his military service, he joined the Tarpon Springs Police Department and was assigned as the SRO at Tarpon Springs High School. As both a community member and SRO, Toreen has a personal commitment to the safety and security of all of our students, staff, and faculty members. His commitment is more than just a job. It is his passion, and his dedication is evident daily. Along with his SRO duties, his extra volunteer activities include being a school advisory board member, assistant softball coach, active mentor to many of our students, co-founder of the Be the Bridge program, which is a program designed to help minority students transition from high school to college, assisted thirty-five of our thirty-eighth senior African-American males during the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen school year to graduate, expanded this program to all ninth through twelfth graders this current year. He's an active volunteer in our Band of America Grand National Champions, including traveling with the group, as you know, being the Grand National Champions back in November. He assists with marching band duties. He volunteers and attended the Indianapolis Band of America National Finals, and he co-founded the Officer Charlie Conduct fundraiser held at Tarpon Springs High School this year. Toreen is an excellent role model for and has developed a positive rapport with all of our students. This rapport includes meeting with students and their parents to discuss grades, attendance, and their future plans. Additionally, he works with school staff, community members, and St. Pete College staff, including Mr. Ford and Dr. Bright, to secure the resources our students need in order for them to tour college facilities and earn college credits during the summer between their junior and senior year. He is an active member within our community, helping to provide our homeless students with food, shelter, and counseling. He is on the Board of Directors on the Citizens Alliance for Progress in Tarpon Springs, and he sponsored our Smart Choice Prom DUI reenactment activity, which included arranging to have bay flight land and take off during an assembly on Sponger Field. As an active member of our extended administrative team, Corporal Mathis meets with our members every Monday and provides us up-to-the-minute information with community concerns. As an administrator with over twenty-five years' experience, I've had the privilege of working with many school resource officers. These men and women have displayed the character and commitment that is needed to help keep our schools safe. Corporal Mathis possesses these characteristics and more, and it is my honor to make this nomination. Thank you, James M. Joyer, and we have a nice... Corporal Mathis, we have a... We've gone ahead and had a nice plaque made up. It says Corporal T. Mathis, Tarpon Springs High School SRO of the Year two thousand and fifteen, with our emblem emblazoned on it, with our phrase, "We just can't hide our sponger pride." emblem emblazoned on it, with our phrase, "We Just Can't Hide Our Sponger Pride," presented 5/19/2015. Corporal Mathis, congratulations.
It's funny, because I saw my mom driving in. Sergeant Miller was calling me, saying, "Where are you at?" And I said to my mom, "What are you doing? The kids have to use the bathroom." Got it. And I see Major Young and then the rest of my family here, and then the administration team. Thank you. I look on the dais here and I see faces that I looked up to, Chief, the mayor, city manager, that helped mold me into being the man who I am today. A lot of personal friends, like David and Mr. Tara Panny here, that I consider close friends of myself. I don't know what to say. I do it because I think it's what's right. Kids need to know somebody love them, and if we give them that love, the world is their oyster, and we need to foster that growth. To my wife and my kids, I spend a lot of time away from home dealing with other people's children and not my own, and I thank you so much for allowing me that time to give to the community because it's my passion. And my admin team, we go through these meetings and we're sitting there like, "What are we doing this? Why is this happening?" And in the end, it's because we want to see the best of all of our children, and I have a great support staff here. My chain of command includes Major Young, and he is, every time I pick up the phone and I say, "I need this," or "This kid needs a pair of shoes," or this, do it, go get it, make sure they're happy. So you know, I think we have the highest African-American graduation rate in the district. I think the school district's at 66%. Last year, we graduated 32 out of 33. This year, we're at 35 out of 38, and in the last two years, we've placed 10 homeless families into housing with the organizations around the community. So I thank you all for giving my chain of command the resources we need to make this work. It's a team effort, and I just want to say thank you.
I know you don't want to stay around till the commission meeting. Corporal Mathis? Well, I just like, you know, I'd like you to know that we appreciate you in terms of what you do for the city of Tarpon. I think that you epitomizes what Tarpon Springs Police Department is all about. You know, in Rotary, we talk about service above self, and I think that that's what the Police Department is about, and you are a prime example of an individual that always given of himself for others. I want to let you know, I personally appreciate you. I look at you as a role model, you know, and some people think that you have to be older than somebody to be a role model, but we model ourselves after people that we think have the type of character and traits that we would like to have, and I think that you exemplify that, you know. I always tell you about patience because as a young person, you know, you want to do it all to date, and sometimes you have to wait for some things to happen, but I'm so happy that, you know, that you received this award. I can tell you truthfully, there'll be many, many more in your future as you continue to do the things that you desire, you know, in life. So from my position as Mayor of the City of Tarpon, I personally thank you for all that you do for citizens of Tarpon Springs, so thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
Awesome, awesome, incredible. Yet, we won't see this on the news, and we won't read it in the paper maybe till the end of the month or the next month. Over the last few months, police departments all over the country have been getting a pretty bad rap, and I'm not saying that some may have extended bounds, I'm not going to get into that, but the point is, we, as a community, through people like Mr. Mathis, are really tackling the problems that are at our society in a larger scale, and we need to let people know about Toreen and the progress and the things that community police officers, people who live in the community, who are part of the community, how that really changes the dynamics of a police department. And I've known Toreen for a while, and he's always got a smile on his face. Whenever I've gone to games or anywhere, all the kids are hanging on him like Santa So thank you for your inspiration, and I hope through our administration, who I have quite a bit of confidence in, I saw a sign out by the public safety facility, "Experienced Police Officers Wanted." It's going to be hard to find somebody like Toreen, but that's the standard we should be looking for, and hopefully, and I don't know, but they've got a whole bunch of stuff on the plate, but maybe we need to do some kind of young intern program to incorporate some of the kids in high school or stuff who aren't really always wanting to be college people, but can see maybe an opportunity, and with Toreen's guidance and his mentoring, I think it shows another side. And the reason why I kind of bring this up is I have a family friend, and their son, he's about, I guess about 21 or 22 now, and I saw him over Christmas, and he's a firefighter. I said, "Whoa, you're the last person I expected to be a firefighter." He says, "Well, I was thinking about being a police officer, and I was thinking about being a firefighter." But firefighters are always the heroes. They're going in saving people, and police officers are always the people arresting and people getting mad at them. We have to find a way to change that attitude, and that's the prime example of how you do it. Thank you, Toreen.
Any other public comments on this item? Let's see, item three was... We'll now go to our consistent agenda. Attorney fees, trash match, stand-off, LLP invoice number 48725. Three is special events, Out of School Bash, June 20th, Fourth of July picnic, July 4th, Independence Day Celebration and Fireworks Display, July 4th. Award file number 150111-N-R-S, single source purchase of programmable logic controllers. Seven is renewed file number 130094-C-CM, road and landscape material, utilized in Pinellas County Cooperative Contract number 123-02-15-B-KF, Florida Dirt Source. Award file number 150110-C-CM, road and landscape material utilized in Pinellas County Cooperative Contract number 1450188-PF, aggregate material, doing buildings as Angelo's Recycle Materials. Nine renewed file number 140058-C-DM, surplus asset liquidation and/or auction services with related solutions through the National Joint Powers Association, contract number Ten is award bid number 150090-B-RS, chemicals for the reverse osmosis water plant. Eleven is award file number 150100-C-RS, furniture for reverse osmosis plant through the State of Florida Contract number 425-001-121, furniture, office, and files. Twelve is renewed file 140073-N-DM, purchase of citywide internet and related services. Any item anyone would like to pull?
Number nine, for discussion.
Okay, number nine?
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So number nine is, in terms of the surplus assets, that's something that's always been of interest to me for the city, and I know that we've talked about it in the past in terms of how we go about it and how we sell them, and I don't have any issue with the process that we have in place for selling the surplus assets. What my point in pulling this is, going into the budget season, I think it would be beneficial for this commission to have a list of the assets that were sold, what they were sold for in terms of dollar figures, and which departments those funds were reimbursed, or yeah, I guess departments and funds, those assets were reimbursed into. Just thinking about moving forward with budget season, Mark, I think that that's something that would be beneficial to the commission to see in terms of, you know, what assets... I mean, we sit here and approve new trucks and new equipment all the time, but it'd be nice to see, you know, our equipment as it gets older, when we're selling it, and what it is that we're selling, and how much money it's bringing, so, and what department that money's going back into.
We will do that.
Thank you.
You know, items? Show a little bit of motion.
We have approval.
A second.
Any public comments on any of these items? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Panny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next is Special Casette, item 13, award bid number 150089-B-JJ, reclaim water storage, pumping, and transmission facilities. Mr. Robertson?
Good evening. Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. The item before you is reclaim water storage, pumping, and transmission contract for construction. This is a bid project, and the low bid was $4.386 million. That amount includes acceptance of an additive alternate item that we added in, replacement of the golf course irrigation pump station. We had some money that we were able to use. We put that in the bid, and we were able to afford doing that. This is a cooperatively funded project. $1.96 million is reimbursable to the city from the Water Management District. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Robertson? Show a little bit of motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Panny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 14, authorized utilization of Pinellas County Contract number 0419786, radio console system. You have the chief?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You have a memo from our Chief Procurement Officer, Jay Jackus, to utilize Pinellas County Contract to purchase new radios for police and fire departments. Currently, all police and fire departments operate off the county 800 megahertz system. It's an advanced system. Everything is digital now. Our radios are pretty much nearing their end-of-life cycle. They're old, they need to be replaced. Currently, we're operating, we can get a good discount off the county contracts while we're bringing this to you now. This will be funded with local option sales tax funds, but we need to replace all of our radios, police-fire radios and the command vehicle, radios and dispatch. This is a very big project. It's either we do it now and save roughly $90,000, or we wait maybe a year or two, and it may cost much more. So we're bringing this forward to you now to make this purchase. Again, once these radios reach their end-of-life cycle, they're done, they're no longer maintained, and, you know, we would lose the ability to communicate, so this is why we're bringing this to you now. We can save money off this contract and get these radios and be set for 10 to 15 years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Just to kind of piggyback, and I guess on what Commissioner Tara Panny was talking about, with these, when we replace them, will we try to sell those?
There's a trade-in value for these radios, yes. And obviously, if they reach their end-of-life cycle, that trade-in value is much less.
Okay.
So all that's calculated in that $90,000.
In addition to questions for Chief?
Mr. Mayor, just, I was going to actually ask a similar question to yours. So when we do get a little bit of trade-in value, that money will go back into the same fund that we're utilizing to pay for this?
Well, this quote is with the trade-in value.
Oh, gotcha.
It would be higher without it.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Show a little bit of motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Panny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Ordinance Resolution, item number 15, Ordinance 2015-12, Amendment to the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 11, Section 191-01, signage accessory to the sale of gasoline, this is the second reading.
Ordinance 2015-12, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 11, Section 191.01 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to amend signage accessory to the sale of gasoline and providing for an effective date. That's the second reading of Ordinance 2015-12, by title only, was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on April 3 and May 8, 2015.
Anything new for us?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is Heather Earl, our principal planner, and no, we don't have anything new.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. At the first reading, I had a couple of questions regarding the ordinance, and I'm not sure if the answers that I received really addressed the questions that I was asking. I understand the desire and the need to go to digital signage for the gas stations, which is addressed when you look at 191.01, Part E, which makes sense to me. My question or my concern is why we're doing Parts C and D, which both seem to address increasing the size of the signage, and I wanted to get clarification on that before we move forward.
Mayor, Commissioners, I actually have a representative here who was part of this request coming into, yes, it's a staff-initiated request, but they were part of the actual impetus for this. I'm going to actually let them discuss this because, being that I'm very new, I wasn't here when this was discussed, so that being the case, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Katie Cole with Law Firm of Hillward-Henderson, 311 Park Place, Suite 240, Clearwater, and I represent Race Track Petroleum, who is one of the owners of gas stations here in the community, and we did meet with staff previously to ask about some modifications to this provision of the code, and as Heather spoke, the staff actually drafted this and then just sent it to us after it was advertised, so we weren't integrately, excuse me, intimately involved in the details. However, based on your inquiry two weeks ago, I went back and looked at some of the language that Steve and I had previously spoken about, and so there were two things. One, I think that there was an acknowledgement that the current code allows for an additional sign for gas prices, but that the trend now is to have some branding plus the gas price on signage at gas stations, and so there was not a desire to have multiple, allow a greater number of signs than was previously allowed, and therefore just roll in the total square footage of permitted signage to divvy that up between what used to be one price sign and one branding sign now can be combined and just have two separate signs. Secondly, there was a change, and this is a nuance that...
Can you repeat what you just said? Is that in reference to Part D?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It is. So that kind of goes into the deletion in Part A and in reference... It is, so that kind of goes into the deletion in part A and in reference in part D.
A gasoline service station may allocate its total allowance of freestanding sign area. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
I just wanted to make sure I, I'm following along.
Secondly, your concern was about going from eighteen square feet for the amount of signage available for the pricing to the proposed twenty-five square feet, and I think as, um, staff spoke at the last hearing, twenty-five was not a magic number other than the fact that it is a round number, it is one that is commonly used in signage, it is a standard box, but I think most pertinent is the current code allows for nine square feet of sign face, which is defined in the code, on each side of the sign, as opposed to the proposed twenty-five square feet of sign area, and if you look at the definitions in your code, sign face is defined as the area of actual advertising signage, so it would be the boundary of the numbers in this instance versus sign area, which is the boundary of the box, for lack of a better description. And I am not a mathematician nor a sign manufacturer, however, I did pull out my calculator, and I think you had a sample of one of racetrack signs in your, um, packet that looked similar to this, and this is a hundred square foot sign, which it was simply a sample, this was not to imply that this was the sign that, um, will be brought in, but looking at this as an example, on this, the gas prices represent about forty percent of the sign area, so if you take those two definitions, sign area versus sign face, it's about forty percent of the sign area. If you take twenty-five square feet of sign area, which is proposed, versus nine square feet of sign face, that's about thirty-six percent, so I think using this as an example is, I just ran the numbers just to see what it came out as, and, and it's pretty close to those same numbers, so if you look at the fact that nine square feet of sign face for a gas price is about thirty-six percent of a twenty-five square foot of sign area, that is consistent. Did I totally lose you? I, I didn't, I, I would, wanted to try to give you something tangible, 'cause I know it helps, but I think the difference in the definitions, um, you can see in section A, it has, with the deletion is the sign shall not exceed nine square feet per sign face, whereas in section C, it is an allowance of an additional twenty-five square feet of sign area in addition to the sign area which is otherwise permitted on site. So if you, so just in layman's terms, it's the difference between the numbers versus the entire box.
I, I guess what I'm still trying to fully comprehend is, are, are we making the signs bigger? A, and I think, um, I mean, you're talking about how much space is allocated to the cost of the gasoline and, and different mathematical calculations, but I, but I think what I'm asking, and I, I suppose what maybe some residents are curious about is, are we making the signs bigger?
And, and I think based on, on those calculations on this, not particularly, it certainly depends on which sign application is brought in. I think the point is, there's a measurement of a sign face that's this, and there's a measurement of sign area that's this, and that difference is accounted for in the nine versus the nine or eighteen versus the twenty-five. It's not exact, I, I'm not implying that, I just was trying to give you some relative explanation as to how those numbers flow and what the practical impact would be, which I know is your concern, Vice Mayor. So frankly, I don't know that it's going to generate significantly more signage at all, it's just a difference in how it's calculated.
So I guess the rationale is just to go from eighteen to twenty-five just 'cause you want larger signage, is, that's what I'm trying to understand, too?
No, I think it's two things, it, it's how the sign is calculated, because you're now combining a gas price with your overall signage, so instead of being permitted a sign by itself with just a gas price, it's going to be combined into the overall signage calculations.
Okay.
And so to split that up, there's a really negligible difference between, if you're looking how, how the code defines sign face versus sign area, there's a negligible difference. I mean, maybe a more exact nut, uh, apples to apples would be ten to twenty-five instead of nine to twenty-five, but I, it was, that was the best rate analysis that I could give based on the examples in your packet, just to-
I, I appreciate, uh, the explanation, um, I, I, maybe I don't fully understand it, but I appreciate it. Uh, I, I continue to wonder why we, I, I, I'm on board with E, I, I'm on board with, um, allowing an electronic reader board, I, I understand gas prices change multiple times throughout the day sometimes, um, so, so I get the desire for the electronic reader board. I'm not fully understanding why there needs to be any change to the size of signage, that's, I don't know, that, that's where I'm at, but I, but I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Well, let, let me, uh, just muddy the water a little bit, too, I, I don't know what is clear or not, but what would happen, and this is for you and staff, if there was no change in relationship to the signage from the nine-foot, uh, face, what would it do in relationship to, um, that, the actual sign that we're talking about now? If you only had that nine-foot face, could you do it within that, that space there? Or it would give you a, a chance to have two signs then instead of just the one?
I think that that's the key, Mayor, is instead of having, um, I was thinking about there's a gas station on Alt nineteen just outside of downtown, and you can notice there's a very small monument sign that simply has numbers on it, and there's no, no other, in than additionally, there's a freestanding sign that has a logo. This, regardless of the nine square feet of sign face to twenty-five square feet of sign area, I think that that's a negligible number and we're getting lost in the weeds on that. I think one of the things that is important here is the ability to take your total allotment of freestanding signage and use it to include both gas prices and branding, and not separate those and have a separate or additional gas price sign that might be so small. Also, in my client's situation, their property is located on US nineteen, so frankly, a nine-square-foot sign on US nineteen to show the price of gas is really meaningless.
Not out of character.
So-
And, and you mentioned branding, um, but, but the electronic reader board aspect is only showing gas prices?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, just the numbers.
Well, again, and I appreciate your patience with me, I, I know that, um, th- there are people within the city that are very sensitive to what we do in terms of signage, um, we, we made, uh, an exception to our rule for the hospital, which some people are very much in supportive, and some people think that their sign is too bright. Uh, I know there's a sign on Keystone, which is not within the city of Tarpon Springs, uh, for a church that we have no jurisdiction over anyway, but, but it's near the city, and I get comments about that as well, um, that it's literally painful to the eye, so I, I know there are people that care about signage, and that's why I'm asking these questions, but again, I appreciate your patience as I ask these, thank you.
No, and I appreciate the opportunity to respond, we're, we're at somewhat of a disadvantage since neither of one, us drafted the code to best explain it, but I think the bottom line is, the increase is frankly negligible and simply as, especially in light of the definitions of sign face dur- versus sign area, and Steve X, Steve's explanation at first reading of, i- it is a more industry standard, a twenty-five-foot cabinet or a is, is more industry standard, i- is frankly one of truly the best explanations. We can back into why the numbers are negligible, but I, I think he chose it simply because it was an industry standard type of size.
And then one, one additional, just follow-up question, i- is there a different smaller number rather than the additional twenty-five square feet that would reach the goals, um, that, that the gas stations have while still, uh, not increasing the, uh, square footage by very much? Is there a smaller number that would also work?
I, I, I mean, I, it, that's certainly up to you all of a smaller number that would work, I think it's, I think we're looking at the total amount of freestanding signage, and I, again, you're talking about-
Well, I thought, I talked to the city manager about this earlier today, I thought that there was a, a particular number that was like standard for this type of signage, and I, I was looking to find a way to, uh, help make that work.
The twenty-five square feet, I think, is that standard number, would, that standard cabinet size number, based on my understanding. A, and again, I think you're talking about four percent difference based on the example in your packet and what we did, so, um, I mean, if you're looking at nine square feet now plus then ten square feet of sign face, it, I think it's so negligible that it's hard to give you a different number, is the point, eighteen to twenty-five is a negligible number, so, um, I, I'm having a hard time giving you any different answer because, again, we didn't write it, we're just explaining to you the difference in the definitions and why that, the difference in those definitions make this change very negligible, and I'll-
Thank you.
Anything else? Oh, I, I don't have any additional questions, uh, show a little bit of motion?
With approval. Second.
Any, uh, public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, next we go to miscellaneous items, item number sixteen, discussion, uh, Tarpon Springs Citizens Academy.
Thank you.
Commissioner-
It's a little less math involved in this one. I didn't, I didn't minor in math in college, but I was getting a little confused there as well, but anyway. Um, no, this is something I have thought about for, uh, for, for, for quite, uh, s- some, 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 some time, actually. Uh, Oldsmar and Largo have these, and it's basically a way to get citizens involved in, uh, though in city government, in the sense of more off, showing off the different facets that they have, and I look more to Oldsmar as the example because of their, um, size. And basically, what, what Oldsmar does is that they run, um, it's a, it's like a nine-week course, and by course, it's, though it's like one evening a week, uh, though for nine weeks, and at each meeting, and you have a class that you, you actually apply to be a part of this, and they take in twenty-five residents, I believe, you, you can be a non-resident to be in this, but they give preference to residents, and then at, 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 at each class, they showcase some part of the city. Now, they even have less of a full-service city than, than we do, so we have a lot more we can show off, but they do, uh, the fire department or their RO plant, and, uh, so it's kind of like a mini leadership panelist, which I'm just finishing up now, if you think of it that way, or like what the sheriff does at, at his academy. And anyway, um, uh, I, I, I think for Tarpon Springs, we're, I mean, to my knowledge, maybe besides St. Pete, we're the, we are the most full, full-service city in the county, and we have so much to showcase, and I think many of our residents, um, that are interested in government don't quite know everything that we do a, as a city, from the police department to the fire department to the RO to public works to theater, I mean, many, many parts, and I think by, um, by doing this, we could get, um, more, more involvement from, from the public, I think it would help also to, um, continue to better improve that customer service mindset that we always try to improve here a, a, at, at the city, that we're not just kind of doing things here and residents are over there, but get more of that cohesion involved and then showcase what their tax dollars are, 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 are actually go, go, going towards. And, um, I know when I was younger, I would have, I'm kind of a geek, I, I would have done it in a heartbeat, you know, and, um, uh, I think it'd be a great thing, and I think also it'd be a great way to get, um, a larger pool, um, of applicants for boards. I know we have, uh, uh, talked about di- different ways to get, uh, new applicants for, for, for advisory boards and get a more of a diverse pool, and I think this would be a way to, to, uh, to do that, that people might be able to get, get it, get it, get it, get interested, um, in city government and our various things that, that, that we do. The good part is if, um, if you all, if we're all in agreement, um, and I can work on this more in June and some of July, then bring it back for more official approval, uh, Oldsmar's agreed to give us everything they have as far as the, the actual structure, so we don't have, we don't have to re, reinvent the wheel as far as the application, the process, we can take it and make it our own, and, uh, I, 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 I just think it'd be a great idea, it'd be a great way to get residents more involved, to get, you know, be people more interested in, in advisory boards or running for office or, you know, what have you, and, uh, um, I'm kind of surprised we haven't done it sooner, so, um, it's something I would like to go ahead and do if, if, if you all, or not do, but, you know, kind of put together and, and, and to win a more so- solid, you know, so- solid, solid, uh, proposal, if you all are in agreement on it, and again, Oldsmar's willing to, um, let, let me come over there and, uh, take everything that they have, and, um, I, I did ask them, uh, budget-wise, how much does it cost? Obviously, there's, there's, there's ways, there's, there's parts that you can't calculate, you know, if you're got salaried employees, but they budget actually hard costs, about a thousand dollars a class, and that's, um, they get, they, they get a shirt, there's food, et cetera, so it's not, it's not a huge budgetary expense, but I, I, I think it, I think it would be well worth it, so I'd love to get you, uh, love to get y'all, y'all's input on it.
Oh, I, I, I definitely don't have any problem in the, um, exploring of it, I, I would suggest it, is that those, uh, departments like the police, uh, fire, the rest, that there's some discussion with them in terms of, uh, you know, manpower, those type of things in terms of doing it, you know, how do they feel about it, uh, those things, but I, I don't have any problem in you getting additional information and, you know, being able to talk to them, uh, from a perspective of, uh, of what, what it's going to entail for them to, to do it, and, uh, I guess from that, it's just a matter of, you know, how to administer, um, and city manager, I guess, would get with those department heads in terms of how to administer, in terms of signing up those type of things, so, but I don't have any concerns, so, Commissioner Tarpenny?
Thank you.
Commissioner Se- Um, I would just, uh, say thank you, Commissioner, for bringing it forward, I think, uh, as we sit up here, there's a lot of different roles that this commission, um, strives to undertake, um, as we sit up here, and I certainly think that commission initiatives are something that, um, from time to time, we may not see enough of, because a lot, in a lot of cases, it's hard to bring initiative to fruition and, and dedicate a lot of time to actually seeing it through, so I thank you for, uh, bringing it forward. Um, yeah, I, I absolutely have no problem supporting the, the, uh, early stages and moving forward and trying to get a better look, um, at what the city of Oldsmar does and how this, this city would be able to implement it, um, and a little bit more in terms of what you envision, uh, but, but from the get-go, I think it's a good idea, and I definitely say, uh, appreciate the initiative, so, thank you.
Commissioner Se-
Uh, yeah, I also think it's a great idea, do you know who administers and runs the classes in Oldsmar?
Um, they do it through, uh, the clerk's office, um, I actually think that they do some sh- uh, when I was in, uh, when I was talking to the clerk, that she says they do share it sometimes, but, uh, ultimately, and I was just thinking it inside, and I did talk with Irene briefly about it, um, uh, though, about one, one, a week ago, uh, the clerk's office, and I think especially in our case, would be best equipped to administer the, the whole, you know, process of it, so.
And how often are these classes or-
Well, um, how, how they, um, Oldsmar, though it's nine weeks a year, it's just one class a year, and they do theirs in the fall, uh, I, that's one thing I'd like to get y'all, y'all's input on, and then staff as well, I think fall's too busy here with everything we do for us, I think more, um, after epiphany, starting in January, um, would be a better time for us, um, but that's, but yeah, there, but we can have it shorter than nine weeks, longer, I don't see, see the, the need for longer, but, um, yeah, it's just a, it's not a year-round thing, it, it's, um, they do it like a one-time class.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other, uh, question? So from that, yeah?
Thank you.
Go forth, young man.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, Mayor.
Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, then, uh, this concludes our agenda, uh, chief?
Um, just one comment, we went up to Washington last see, my, DC last week, myself and a bunch of agency members for, um, law enforcement week, and it was, uh, it was well-done, it was a solemn occasion, it was, um, it was heartbreaking, but yet it was honorable to be there because of, you know, there's twenty thousand five hundred names on that wall up there to include our officer- know, this 20,500 names on that wall up there to include our officer and the other ones that were also killed in line of duty from our agency. And we got to really help and support the family, which was a good thing. And kind of one of the highlights is one of Teresa's daughter, Alina, got to take a selfie with President Obama. So, that was, that was kind of neat for her, and I think he said to her when he was doing it, "You're not going to put this on Facebook, right?" And of course, you know the answer to that. It was a very good week for all of us, and it helps us move forward, you know, towards eventual closure. You know, we ultimately have to move on, but we always have to be there for the family and department. But it really was an honor to be up there last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else, sir?
Just one thing. As we end the school year, we were, we have been working probably since January on an innovative idea, the possibility of a partnership between the city and the high school for a public pool. That is something, as we went to look for a model to deal with, there is no model that we can find to look at. So, it's one of those things, we have been having to look since January at every hurdle that we would have to do in the thing. And I didn't want to bring it to you until we were sure the major portion of the hurdles were over. Our last conference was Friday with the city attorney and attorney of the school board to deal with the many issues along there. So, we're not ready to have it in the press yet. We're not ready, but the word is starting to, the word is starting to leak out. Well, no, but I don't have to comment, because we're not ready to get the details. We are getting closer to the point and closer with being maybe within months of looking at the idea and bringing the concept of me to the city and the school, to the school board, what it would take to do that. And so, as you hear rumblings, we're just not ready to come with you yet, because we're still working out the many, many details and looking at locations, looking at the ability to do it, the abilities to do it within a budget. But now, we have got a lot of the stage going, and people are starting to get excited. I think you're hearing trickling of the words that we're working on it, so I just want to let you know we're diligently working on it. It's looking like that we will be making proposals to each board to discuss the concept and see if it's something we want to do, but to bring it to you, we need to have everything laid out to you, and we'll be diligently working on that and hopefully coming to you maybe by the start of the next school year with, with what it would take, what the commitments from both parties are, and open it up for the public and stuff, and see if that's something that the citizens of Tarpon Springs for their high school and for their city would want to be involved in. This is something that's probably been, I don't know, David, 20, 25 years we've been talking about in this community. It was one of the reasons I was reluctant to give up the nursing home site, because I always envisioned that as possibly a piece of land to do it. But hearing that from those people, the school may have a piece of land that we may be able to use to do that partnership. It fits in well with all of the problems you have with joining a public facility with a school. It's perfect on the layout, so all of the cards are coming together for, you know, the ability to make this presentation. Again, have both boards decide if that's something for the future of the community. So, I just want to let you know where we are and that is going on, and when we tighten up those details and get everybody set, we'll be ready to start making those presentations to you and see what the will of the public and the commission are, if we should proceed to a more advanced state to do that with. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Well, I'm sure it's not going to be in the paper.
It can be in the paper, I just not going to have much comments for it about the mechanism.
Well, we're hopeful that, you know, it's downhill now in terms of doing it, in terms of working out a lot of the kinks. I could tell you that I probably have had more comments about a pool than almost anything that anybody would ask me, you know, before I came on the commission, as a commissioner, vice mayor, mayor. And definitely don't ever talk to any young people, because soon as they hold court, they want to know when they're going to get a pool. So, it seemed like a great opportunity, a hope that nothing derails this. You know, sometimes, you know, you want to hear about it, because until everything is signed, sealed, and done, you know, there's that thought that, ah, it might not happen, and you get your hopes up. But it seemed like a great opportunity for everyone, the city, citizens, the school. You know, sometimes they say it seemed like a no-brainer, but we've seen those type of things happen too, but hopefully this thing will work out. I mean, I just, you know, it's hard for me to even envision a pool in Tarpon. I'm, you know, I know how long it took to get a gym that we could say that you could play basketball in. I mean, and other cities have it, so hopefully this is something that we can all agree on and the county can agree on and make it happen, so. But Madam Clerk, I know you have some interesting things for us. Commissioner Banther?
Off to get a bathing suit, I got a new one. Lose some weight.
Yeah, well, I started working out for a while. I could just hang around the pool.
No comments, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
Commissioner Seper?
Well, I agree about the pool. I know when I was campaigning and walking all the neighborhoods, that was something I was asked repeatedly, not only from young people, but seniors as well. And then the second thing I want to say is, thank you for putting those bases on those light poles, on dachyls, they are beautiful, and I'm glad to see the work has started and is progressing nicely.
Commissioner Tarpenny?
I just say, and I probably should have started the meeting off with condolences to the Hubbard family in terms of loss of John Hubbard. And those of us that had a chance to work with him know the type of individual that he was, and it's a loss to all of the citizens and cities that he was involved in, but his legacy will go on through the work that he's done. Also, condolences go out to La Lontaca's family in terms of their loss and individual that was a former commissioner, too. I didn't have a chance to serve with, that's what I know of her and her work in terms of giving to Tarpon, so our prayers are with both of those families, and we look to adjourn this meeting if somebody with better eyes can see that it's 7:46, I believe. Give or take.